And I'll make the motion to approve the claims in the bill.
You're gonna have any new business?
No new business.
New old business. Was that about anything?
So it's gonna be fast meeting.
Right.
Canadians?
Maybe.
We're four from Canadian north.
You didn't see anything?
That would be neat.
Eventually, yeah.
First of all, I'd like to thank the town board for allowing us to have a festival. And I think that it was successful. Wanted to thank the police department for doing, Jimmy Vincent for doing all the work that he did keeping everything safe and watching everyone's booths during the night. Um, we'd also like to do it again, uh, September eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth next year. Uh, something for you all to think about.
September what?
Eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. Um, we'd also like to start talking about booth tests. Okay, booth tests, we'd like to have it October twenty-fifth. And that's something that we do with the suits again for the community to come in and have suits and crackers and, uh, water and ice. And the kids games and whatnot, just like we did last year before. And then, uh, have, um, country treat after the whole town have country treat out here. The thirty-first, which is a Friday, October thirty-first, and it's a Friday. And then you do it from like six to eight, unless someone has a problem at that time.
You mean so I'm gonna do the country treat?
That's country treat, after the three years.
Long, pretty long, man. Yeah, cause usually it's six to nine.
Six to nine? I just really wanna thank everybody. I think it was a success and I think people enjoyed it.
Well.
Um, Jamie Ham wanted to say something about, uh, British to get.
It was good, these best times.
Booth test time, um. We usually. Um, four o'clock. And then you have them in.
So what?
Seven, six or seven. When I have a.
What day is that?
Saturdays.
It's Saturday.
It's the last Saturday before the end of the month. And I have a movie that I'll let you handle for kids, have to get my shoe.
So you're gonna say four to seven?
Yeah. Four to six, four to seven.
Six, seven?
There you go. Uh, sometimes it does come out, but sometimes it doesn't. Anyway, um, we can have games and stuff set up for the players if they wanna do that. Um. The British gap is, this coming Saturday from five-thirty, um, until you wanna leave now. Until we can shut down. We've got the Schmitz a lot of catering, um, we have appetizers and wine to start off, and then the full meal, uh, and desserts. And then we will also be having a Simon auction and, um, selling some pies and cakes and whatever we did.
Oh, solid, uh, option, yeah.
There, at the time. It's around the tables like we normally do.
Right on the bridge.
Um, any questions? Do you still have tickets? Barely, um. We're basically sold out from what we were.
I didn't get my tickets.
I just bought mine.
Because we had prior arrangements, but I think those change. So if you have to, it's fair, I'm on your side, if not, okay.
Uh, I'd probably do the, let me check.
Just.
No, all of these are Sandy's, they're numbered.
And we do either way, but like I said, we had other things he was supposed to go to, but those were since that canceled.
All right, I'll ask, I'll make sure, but I think I've got, so. I will ask and put you down.
Well, let me know and before, just to make sure that the plans have still lingered.
Okay. I can do that.
That it?
That's all I have to say, my drink is all I have.
Yeah, well, you got Bill. I have nothing to report on being Hershey County sure for Indiana fifteen credit commission, and then we'll get the, uh, three key issues that, uh, Nathan and Indiana fifteen are focused on right now, I'll, I'll get that message out. Cemetery committee, I have nothing to report on that. On the economic development committee. It reported in paper that something in relation to the Miltown, uh, webpage. And it indicated in some way that I have said that Miltown doesn't have a, uh, webpage.
Website.
We do have a webpage. So if, if we could add that, Chris, I appreciate that because I want people to use that webpage. I'm not sure how much it's huge, I wish we had a, a click.
Numbers on should be aware of the county on the bottom of that, I would think.
There it is, it's in town, I'll just, yeah. I hope it's huge.
That's all I have to report, see?
All right. I think I heard from the cemetery tonight.
Oh, he did all of the time.
Good one.
Cause I'm sure he's like went through all of it.
Who did?
Yeah.
He did.
I have nothing. Oh, you have nothing for the, okay. Nothing on economic G?
I'm ready to take those reports.
I guess it doesn't make it true, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, at our last meeting, I, um, mentioned that I needed to transfer some money from the cemetery savings account into our cemetery operating or mowing.
Yeah.
To do a motion. So I'm gonna ask again, um, right now we're negative three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. And I'm estimating another four weeks of, uh, mowing, so that's another twenty-eight hundred. So roughly, I'm gonna need about sixty-two hundred dollars to transfer, if that's okay with the council.
So you want to transfer sixty-two, and that'll put us, what, at zero?
Well, that'll put us a little bit.
Fair, yeah, fair. And we're moving the funds from?
Cemetery savings account.
Cemetery savings into?
Cemetery operating.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve sixty-two hundred to be moved from cemetery savings to cemetery operating account.
I'll second it. Thank you. Also, my printer has led to a boot. And. Oh, did you?
Motioned.
Oh.
On there.
I second it.
I know, but you have to say I.
Oh, on there, uh.
Sorry.
Well, goodness.
They want you to go another month.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so my printer has led. And I'm, I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the printer is not working, so, um, I looked this one up today, you guys will look it over. The one I've got in there is, it's five hundred and seventy-two dollars for a brand new one. This one's three thirty-nine, and I think it's just as good, I, I don't. I'm trying, it's the highest, all the hundred hubs here.
That's good, right.
I talked to Michael Mills about trying to have him fix it, but he said he couldn't do anything with the, uh, internal, where is this thing, is not working on? Is it really?
That's, that's pretty good lines.
Is this one that you, um, put ink in, or does it have the, the, like it fills up, you know? Like with the, the little cartridges?
Oh, I, I know what you're getting at, yeah.
It's, it's got the ink, um, well, all I want to say is because I, I don't know about me, you all have, but I've went over to them ones that's, that's got the little tubes you fill up, and I didn't tell them you, I have printed a thousand copies and my ink level has never changed. If you were running those other ones, they just, I don't know, because I don't use them enough, but they dry up over time and whatnot, but.
Maybe I was into that.
I'm telling you, it's, I am thoroughly impressed with it.
You talking about the powder ones?
No, it's, uh, this is a.
I seen it online today.
I think that one's kinda like the.
That one does, or this one does?
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta follow, well, mine one powder, it was, it was actually liquid, but you could actually see the ink levels.
I went through two of this, I'm using Jay's printer right now. I'd have Bernie go get me ink twice this week because I've printed some weird papers.
I'm not trying to change, but, uh, do you want us to approve, uh, an allowance?
Please.
For?
Please.
Maybe not this particular one.
But for a printer?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
You wanna do that, so I'll get all of them? I would, oh, do you want a, a five hundred dollar allowance to, I think that'll be fair.
I think so.
I don't see a problem with it, just go with it.
Go with it.
Thank you, guys.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, five hundred dollar allowance.
Yeah, motion, maybe go.
For the printer.
I'll second it.
Hold on, I.
I was waiting.
What are you trying to do?
So, yeah.
I got one more thing, guys. Um, I had a radio call and asked about selling, I know we brought this up before, she wanted to sell her plots back to the town. Well, now she's decided to sell it to somebody else. Can she do that?
To, to my knowledge, you can, because.
They don't.
Is there anything that I'm supposed to do with the deed that she has with us, or?
I just probably need to change it.
I change it? Or does she?
For presented to you changed.
She needs to have it changed.
I would think she needs to contact a lawyer on that. I mean, it's no different than a, than a title for a house or a deed for land.
That's what I was thinking, I don't feel comfortable doing it.
Yeah.
She would just have to quit playing.
Yeah, exactly.
Repent to be in there.
I think it would be a quick claim.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I don't know that you all are responsible for that, though.
Right.
I don't say, and I think it's a, on the. They, they would need to be, but I do think it, it has to be, I think it would have to be presented to do those as the, you know, run of the cemetery, you need a copy of it.
Right.
Show that there's, but yeah.
Okay, okay.
So you mean, like, was something in those contracts that said?
Well.
That the town would have first option at my back on, on, on the option.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Don't we say, oh, check mine in?
Well, if that was the case, I think it was, we would, because we get to purchase it back for what they purchased it for, right?
That's right.
So I think that would be in our best interest if that's the case. Because how long has she had this?
I'm not sure. The reason? Uh, is the sheriff, legislature, sheriff?
Well, no, no. How, she lives in Texas now, and they're not moving back, so.
And how many lots was it, you know?
Two.
Two? Um, I think I would see how long she's held, see what she paid for them, and it'd be in our best interest if, if, if it hasn't changed, maybe not, but if it's changed significantly, it'd be better for us to buy it back.
Right.
If that's in the, the contract.
I'm sure I've read that somewhere.
So you'll check and see?
It may be in my deed.
Is that something you have access to, to look?
Yeah, I remember, uh, uh, I'll check it tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
I'll get back to you later.
Appreciate it. Great, that's all I got, guys. Oh, wait, no, one minute. Should keep saying.
No.
I was telling you. Um, next month, our meeting would, would fall on, uh, what is it, Columbus Day? So we're asking the council if we can move it to the twenty-seventh instead.
Okay, seven? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Twenty-seventh from October.
October. I just had to scroll over, give me half a second. Uh, yeah. So we would, this basically be two weeks till the next one?
No, it's at the end of the month.
I'm saying till the next one.
Yeah.
Keep up here, Jay. You wanna stick me up and get you taken? Yeah, I mean, I see no issue with it.
That's okay. You okay with that, Steve?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'll call the newspaper tomorrow when I know.
I'm not sure, you have to go on that.
Well, I gotta let somebody else know.
At the beginning of the year.
Should I have written?
I think this is you giving notice, I will think.
I'm good.
Should we just say?
Do it, but I don't, I don't think you have to.
So we'll need to make a motion on that?
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion for that, Steve.
I'm like, motion, we're moving it to two weeks, to the twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
That's another.
Thank you, Mark.
No, yeah, that's another, so you're, perfect, thank you.
Jay, I'm here. Jamie, you're, uh?
Rest of the world, well, no real big issues. Thank you, guys, for working on this, and we, we didn't have a lot of people there, but the paperwork was what we had. It was six hundred, one day comes, maybe six parons, four message, or two message board signs, and you're gonna see my field go a lot higher than ours, because we need to fill all that stuff up and be back, so. It worked, and it was fun. Uh, on reserves, I've got nine applications, and you can see how many I'm gonna be allowed to have, and. I would like to start skipping on some reviews with them. This is big leading Google, jerk, was very about doing their chef's department, but couldn't have it me here.
All right.
Um, I think your insurance, you're only four of the reserves are three fifty each, and then all that is gonna need the forty R pre-basis. If, so if we took three, it would be fifty R's each for those three, for the basics, yeah. Now that you're kind of doing it, it's starting to slow down, it's starting to get closer to nine. Uh, I'm, I'm not asking for that part of it now, I'm just asking for the number of reserves allowed, and to go ahead and start.
What has been the average we've had in the past, far as reserves? Have we ever had, how many have we carried at a top number, and then I don't know, we've now zero, so?
Three is the most, the council's gave me something. Uh, but previously, they had ten, was the, I think the town ordinance says ten. But, three is, well, very, are you going with town from both, three? For now, I think that. You know, more is less in some aspects, but if you think about it, two of the, a lot of those people are gonna leave eventually.
Right.
We don't make our plans, so this is just a second spell. If we have, we could stagger that second spell, that'd be great, but.
Out of the nine applicants you've got, does all nine look to be probably gonna be moving forward or moving on? No, okay.
And.
Can I suggest something? Maybe if you do, uh, hire one, you hire thirty down, and then maybe you can down the road for the four months, hire again?
Yeah, definitely, I don't want to hire, like, I don't want to hire five, say, have us three five, one, one, three, I would like to keep it stagnant.
So you're not asking for anything, you're not happy?
Right.
I don't see no issue with it. All right. Steve?
None of them have.
Do we need, uh, do we need anything to approve for that, since we've already had it in place?
Um, well, we're up there for the insurance and the.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so we need to approve three times four hundred? So we need to approve twelve hundred?
Yeah.
We said, I don't see an issue with it. I hate to speak for, uh, you know, when she's not here, but if it's something we've already had in place, I don't see what's, what's gonna change.
They've just transitioned out.
Well, yeah, of course, we're doing pretty good.
Three of our last, so we've put on five of those up in here, and three of them just went on to create a lot.
Right.
We're doing something right. They're, they're in the, I don't know, say, you may have a couple that are town related to.
Well, even the one that just moved on was still here.
Right.
That was, that's, you know, so, yeah.
And I don't care what came from.
Right.
Gary may have invoked, and the rapper I took Gary along here this time Friday, uh, he wasn't getting paid, and then Saturday, we wanted to do the same thing, so.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve twelve hundred dollars to fund, what is it, the basics and insurance for each individual?
The, it's the class.
The class, basic class, condos?
Forty R pre-basis.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Five, say hi.
Right.
Red, then, then.
Jay, Jay don't come back, I don't wear all the honey, but. Uh, yeah, I mean, is, if that's where we typically pull it from, I, I think that there's nothing to change, yeah.
You have anything for us, Matt?
Um, Jimmy has found out that the, how the E-Rank was then number, and now it comes off the, the town or the police department does on it, so Jimmy has signed that, and we're gonna get that guy, send that back, it's taken care of, so he's gonna be out far here now, so that's good. The mowing contract, Billy is still trying to find the mowing contract for us to review to see if we can pull out of that or, um, so as soon as that gets home, we'll be good to go, but pad over. I have documents prepared for the adjournment for the, um, the eviction that we you all approved last time. I brought them for Jay to sign, we activated it, but Jay's not here, so I'll, uh, I'll probably target Eddie's signature, also this, this week, we can give him an active E-sign right, um, instead, and we get that filed and go ahead with it, I thought, I could just, I thought I'd be here to do it in person, I should have checked before, I just did that, so. Um, but that's ready to go as soon as he signs it, and, um, that's all I've got.
Is my termination for the.
For the.
Well, I don't know what the con, we don't have the contract, so I'm not sure.
Don't have the contract, but we, there.
I have the scope of the bid or whatever.
Right.
And he said that he signed the bottom of it.
Of the bid?
Yeah.
Okay.
But originally.
If I find it.
I don't know, like, it didn't have the term, I don't know what the, what the terms are, if that is truly it, I'm, I'm not prepared to advise on that. Because I didn't think it had all the terms that it needed to be, like the contract, if it, if that is the contract, it doesn't have all of the terms, and probably can pull out of it with no consequence, but I'm not gonna.
There was some terms somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently there was some term, I have not, I'm not seeing them, so I can't tell you whether you can pull out with no consequence or not, based on what I'm seeing, so.
Right.
Cause usually that's standard in most contracts, but if you only sign.
Well, to, to our knowledge, without having it in front of us, there is no consequences. It's pull out with seven day notice on either party, but until we got that in front of us, it could be a hundred percent. But as we've kind of talked, we're gonna run, we only got three weeks left of mowing anyway, so we're gonna at least run. Through the end of the year, and then we can talk about that in the future. I did have something, uh, actually, this coming on, um, the, um, I had a gentleman approach me, uh, in regards to public access of. Putting his kayak in. Uh, he was actually supposed to email it to me, uh, but I, I, I did not, uh, you got something?
Oh, I just couldn't do that.
Oh, you didn't?
I had to, just.
Do you know?
Well, the actual problem was, he wanted to have a, basically a contract to be able to put in whenever he wanted to. And at Kaden Country Communes, and come out.
At, what are you talking about?
No, he wanted to do Kaden County Communes, and they told him, no, because he was talking like. Whenever he wanted to do it, so like at three o'clock in the morning.
That's it.
Uh, that type of thing, and I don't know what public access there is that he's talking about, and if anybody goes nearby, and he's got sort of a little motor or whatever, you know, probably won't be too well about that. He said he was gonna come.
Yeah, I, I did get the a hundred percent of it, but what I took from him, he was wanting to put in up at top four on, on somebody else's property. And then come down here.
Come down here and come out.
And, and come out?
Yes, before the dam.
Right.
And that's kind of the problem.
Yeah.
Those are those, I've read that, they were told now.
What you got?
I thought the, the ramp was public access.
No, it's not?
No, that is own my property.
Kaden Country, um, Todd, have the Todd Ford, and they, where they built all that and everything, and then down here, the, the public access is below the dam, and that's it. So if he wants to put in there.
Or if he wants to paddle under the bridge, he gets to come out of the mill lot.
Could have left it there.
Well, I was just, uh, you know, I was just, uh, go to maybe bring it up to the board and.
He said he was gonna come to a meeting.
Did he?
Yes, he did, he came in here with a lot, he had a lot to say.
Okay.
He said he was gonna come in there after talking to you.
So I can advise him if he wants to paddle underneath the, the. Take out the right?
I'm not, I'm still with you.
Yeah. All right, that's all I got.
If he gains that access that he's trying to get, is that gonna set a precedent, and then everybody else is going to do it?
Maybe my candidate.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Maybe my candidate, like.
Or I'm giving permission, just.
Grab the right, because he's up with that. What's the problem? Does public, again, pretty good on that, so.
I mean, Derek told me that they're gonna have somebody. Off the bridge, off Todd Ford, and off the boat.
The idea would be drop, because otherwise, we might miss the boat, like you were.
Well, no, they dropped the boat, they put the boat in, then pulled over, and went through the voice nighting, and all of that stuff, and. You know, you realize you're off property, you can't do that.
Actually, uh, talking about that, made me think about another one that, um, can we, going back to the insurance on the dam? Can we possibly put that dam in an LLC? So maybe do away with. To maybe do away with the liabilities, because of the, if the LLC owns the dam, what are you gonna take from the dam? If the town owns the dam, there's always the time to get it. So.
You can put things in LLC generally, I don't, I haven't seen the town do it specifically, but I can think of that, if that's what you all.
That's, I think that's.
I like that, too.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea, if that's what, thing we can do, that's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay, I'm done.
I think I've.
I'd do that thing, but never LLC, and I would not see anything against that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything against it.
You not have anything else?
Oh, yeah, I got a lot, you wanna hear it? I have a question first. Uh, I couldn't make the last meeting, I was trying to get online to see what all was going on, I could never get on, I was just saying coming soon. Is there a problem, am I messing up, or what?
Did we, we didn't lie the last time, did we?
We didn't.
We didn't lie the last time?
Oh, there was.
So you can, you can do it now?
Okay, damn. Uh, I have a couple other questions then. Uh, on the ordinances last time, I guess there was a discussion about that, I heard, what, what went down on that ordinance, of course. Foul or noxious odor that it's talking about, you know, did anything said like that, like they were gonna change it over? Change it over to another or something, flip it over.
Do we have anything on that?
Last month, we were speaking about it, um, public nuisance.
Yeah.
The odor was underneath that, wasn't it?
It'd be multiple reports, multiple people.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, uh.
Well, that'd be multiple people proposed a problem.
I mean, it had multiple. Well, you had two or three, so.
We haven't had two or three show up here, cause they're all.
Well, you know, there's, I'll, I'll tell you a quick story. I've had probably four of my neighbors, I get back from Arizona or wherever, and. And the first thing they did, man, it should have been bad, should have been bad. And so, I asked especially one guy, I asked him, why, I said, when's coming the meeting, but. Get straightened out.
Yeah.
And he just stands there and looks at me, no one even answered.
Well, unfortunately, without that, um, other person to stand up, or the other two or three, we've only got one.
No, we got more, we got one here, we got this two.
Does that fall under?
You, you live the same way?
I thought somebody else smelled it on our street before, too.
Uh, nobody's reported it, or?
They were in the meeting one, and they were sitting.
You asked Steve about it, I'm not trying to call.
No, I mean, some.
Well, we're just, we're just, we can only go by, if we've only got one report, we can only get by one report.
Yeah.
If we get two or three or four, we're gonna have to act on or do something, but unfortunately.
So does that ordinance cover it then?
What's that?
Does that ordinance, we have.
Well, yeah, it turns into public nuisance then.
The council needs to have that public nuisance.
Well, I, I wanna say something, I don't have a thing against my neighbor, okay, uh, except he's old headed. But anyway, it seems bad. I know he's been in there, he did his building inside, I don't know if he's done that chicken dinner, or walked, or did that. I give the benefit of that, you know, uh, but it seemed like even with that, they should go again and try to do something, this case pops up again.
It was bad.
Well, we could make all kinds of ordinances to keep from something happening in the future, you know, I mean, something almost represents itself.
Worse than smell.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I've had.
Cause I haven't smelled this much of sneakers.
Yeah, I'm like. And then I would ask you guys, everybody here, really, if you had that same problem, how would you handle it? I can't, I can't leave my windows open at night. Uh, I can't do a cookout, I can't do anything outside. I go out in the garage, I gotta set the garage door, I mean, that's no way to handle it. And I'm not trying to make threats or anything, but if I gotta live like that, I'm on sale. Then I had a guy, I had two guys come over to the property. One of them just go walking, he wanted to make a rental out of it. The other guy liked it, and he is from this town, he said, I just want my own place. And he looked inside, we went out.
Wait, they smell that, they smell.
Well, yeah, it, wait a minute, it did smell. We sat out in the garage and talked about one of the, every couple weeks, ended up there. He said, I like it, I'll see if I get the money, get started. We go outside, and about halfway to the house, it hit, you know, the wind changed, and he's like.
It's covered in disclosure, isn't it?
I, what?
It's covered in disclosure, isn't it? Yeah, disclosure.
I don't know, what they're saying is the, if the town ordinance, yeah, take care of.
Yeah, but, uh, the guy turned, he said, what did it smell? And I said, probably chicken. He says, what's in that meal? And I said, chicken. He said, I don't want it, and I left.
He's not using it as a.
It's actually quail, it's not chickens.
No. Is it quail only now? Okay, that's what I was wondering, but it doesn't.
It's not as bad.
It's not as bad, I'll give you, it really isn't as bad. But, uh, you know, so that's a big plus, it might be alive. But I decided, and Joyce, a friend of mine, her, don't see that's coming out here, and she said, well, let's keep it, let's keep it, you know, but if, if it's gonna smell, then I'm gonna put it up. And then if it, I don't know what to do, if, if, if the people back away, you know, because it's smelling, but. But you, uh, Jimmy, don't you think that, that with this quail only, it's not gonna smell as bad?
I haven't smelled it, I go through there quite a bit, and I, I told you guys that, you know, and, you know, when he was burning, absolutely a hundred percent, but. To be honest with you, he has been the ideal tower in town, one, and he's called, I mean, he and ours inspected his place. Indiana, Department of Health, uh, Crawford County Health Department, he was very open, uh, he offered to buy out the garbage can, to start putting it in there.
I don't, he, he must be putting it in his regular garbage can, after he's never put it in, and help, but that would be part of it, but he did change his fans around, I saw that.
It helped.
And that may help, you know, but I just don't wanna be stuck between a rock and a hard spot if people come. My, my daughter, it is not, it's not near what it was. Uh, the other morning, when you came over there, but it hit for about a minute, and then the next day, it was up on the log, and I went to the office, like, man. But I don't know what, what would you guys do in that case? I mean, how would you feel if you couldn't go out in the backyard and cook it out, couldn't sleep, or your windows open, or, you know, I mean, that, how would you handle it?
I, I completely understand your, you know, argument, I would just have to cross that bridge when I got there.
When I get around, I've, I've asked several people, and I sort of get the same reaction.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't wanna move, I like it here, you know, for there. And one of the neighbor, I came down Saturday night, I had the music, and one of the neighbors hollered at me, so I went over, we sat down and talked. And we, can't hear anywhere, it was music, but we talked, you know, and, uh, so I said, I gotta get back home, I got stuff to do, and. And they asked me, said, you gonna be leaving down? I said, yeah, maybe in a couple weeks. And he said, well, we may not see you then, we're gonna start moving next month, you know, and then you, that, he said. So people are starting to, I think they're realizing more of it, and they're just saying.
Well, they didn't have a place, didn't have a retirement sign on their place?
No, they haven't, they haven't sold it. No, they haven't sold it, they're just getting ready to move, they're gonna put it up for sale.
Okay.
Of course, I have one across the street, been presenting for three years, so, eight hundred thirty. But I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be a bomb, you know.
Right.
Well, but I can get three people to come down here, you know, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I think that's what the ordinance is gonna.
Okay.
You know, in order, well, I mean, we would have to approve it, the nuisance, but it's more than, like he said, one person, so we have to have numerous complaints.
Yeah, I understand.
You know what I'm saying?
But it's, it's weird, but I talked to one of the other neighbors, too, and he said, well, you all went down here once, and he said, I just went in, they were, they said, leave, and I said, well, how about going down there with me? He just stood there, looked at me, and walked away.
Yeah.
And they don't wanna talk about it, and it's weird, you know, so, you know, we'll see, you know, alright, alright, I guess that's not it. Thought, how do I get a hold of, how do I get in there on the line though now, since you got this set up? What do you got?
Oh, shoot, I'm, it'll be on YouTube, and go to.
Is it the website, or is it top of that paper we have on?
Yes, no, no, I did not, it'll be on there tomorrow.
Or I just Google it, and then it goes down home, click on the minutes. I'm like, I wanna hear that on me.
I'll second that. Uh, it is six forty one. Oh, yeah.
We're only gonna have. We're only having a hundred.
YouTube.